I think when the Sioux Bridge West, we can have everything ready to do a workshop with those of you who are interested to go over the cost for both of these projects. And I'd like to recommend to you, there's two projects. And we can submit an application for funding to the Arkansas, uh, the Natural Resources Division of the Arkansas Department of Agriculture, which really is the best agency to fund your particular project. But rather than submit two separate projects, I think that the council would like to do both of them, we'd submit both of them as one application to fund those projects. So when we come back, same in about three weeks, whoever wants to come, I'll get with Nancy, schedule a workshop, sit down and look at the cost of each project along with the several recommended improvements. And then we can discuss getting the funding to do those projects. But I think you've got tremendous opportunity here. That yellow highlighted area there already has a number of existing customers that would be customers to the city, wastewater customers to the city of Haskell. And there's a lot of area there identified for potential residential development also. So I just, I think that's would be a huge benefit for the city to pick those customers up as part of your wastewater system. So last one I'd like to do is come back in about three weeks. I'll schedule that with Nancy, do a workshop, kind of informal workshop, to discuss these two projects, the cost and what it would take to get these funded, what that would look like in terms of grades and all of that, and just probably in about three weeks. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
How many sewer systems around now? How many new homes could we add to it?
Residential homes.
Or commercial or what?
Well, if you'll look residential, you'll see where it says Haskell Residential, 72 acres, and then over on the left side of the page, just under 70, that's about 140 acres. That would give you a total, you could pick up almost 400 homes, maybe even more than that, residential homes. Now, the area identified as commercial, uh, which is just right at 250 acres, it's already a number of commercial establishments, establishments already there, they're on SEPC systems. You pick up all of those, and I think you probably will pick up another 150 residential customers there. So you could pick up, uh, about 400 residential homes, maybe more than 400, depending on the size of the lots, and then another probably 100 to 150 commercial customers. So the total is somewhere around 500 to 500, 500 to 600 total customers.
So our plant could handle that?
I believe your plant can handle it, yes. Any other questions?
Do you believe it can or it can't?
Yes, it can. I won't be ambiguous about that. That's because it's not, it sounds like a lot of homes, but the sewer flow is about 150,000 gallons a day total when your plant is handling it.
Three weeks, huh?
Pardon?
Three weeks, huh?
Yeah, I'll definitely, I'll get back with Nancy before three weeks and we'll schedule a meeting. Appreciate y'all's good to be, good to see you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to hang around unless y'all want me to, but.
You're asking questions now?
Well, don't worry, in the next three weeks, I'll be back.
Thank you. You're coming. I'll do the wastewater and water the streets.
Okay, appreciate that. You don't hear me, this is not working.
We go.
Okay, water flow report, total purchase from Southwest was 8,730,122 gallons. That's an average of 291,004 gallons a day. Wastewater trees, North Plant's 5,916,427. That's an average of 197,214. The bit and fluor, uh, sewer flow was 2,193,100. And as far as things that we did during the month, and this is just part of it, daily rounds to check the pump stations and get readings, install new water tabs, label parchering and organized, still working on that. Had North Plant twice weekly with one day of soda ash, pressure wash North Plant, bar screens and UV lights, cleaned out and around a few more pump stations, mowed and weeded all around the city, filled in potholes in a few more places on the system, did several locates, met with someone about the new gas line on end, changed out meter boxes and replaced lids. Inmates came back one more time to do the Trace Creek over there and some ditches. We spotted water and sterilized for the contractor. We did daily work orders, read meters, and then had rereads for the high or low usage. Shut off 30 customers for non-payment and collected monthly water and sewer samples.
Any questions? Mr. Aron, President. Uh, police.
I tried to do a little Denver lead-up this month. This is going to be a copy of our CAD dispatches. What you see is everything that we were dispatched on for the month. It's not counting the stuff that we get on our own, out of the business checks, but the contacts that we made like that. But you'll notice the first 12 are all when we ran with the fire department. We had 10 non-hangups, seven open lines, three business alarms, one dog bite, six animal problems, one vicious dog, one salt. We assisted six to 10 times, unlocked three cars, we had four break-ins in the elements, one burger in progress, eight disturbances, one disservice with a weapon, three physical disturbances, one terroristic call, one keep the peace, three suspicious activities, four suspicious persons, four suspicious people, four terroristic threats. We did eight and nine traffic stops. Now, I didn't try to do some stats to show what, where we compared with the other departments in the city. If you'll notice that the bigger ones, Alexander was the only one that was head us. They had a, but they had a saturation, they did over 300, uh, 200 traffic stops last month. So if you look at that, we're within a top one or two on the calls that were dispatched to the five agencies that are on that channel. Just to give you an idea of, of what our, try to give you a better idea, a more of a breakdown of what we have been up to this month. You've got to hand out where you private view and some of the, some of the cases and activities we've got going on, located, handed back to you at the ends. We've solved some cases, we've got some ongoing cases that we're in depth in, but just to let you know that it's, we've got more than just some speed going on out here. Any questions?
Thank you. Iron Rescue.
For the month of September, we had 29 rescues, nine fire-related runs, brings us to 299 runs year-to-date. Equipment repair, we had to replace the front brake pads on the rescue, had 34 man-hours of training, and then last week on October the 8th, we did the fire safety house over at Westbrook Elementary, run approximately 400 kids through that program over there. Any questions?
Thank you, pardon. Plan and commission?
So I have plan and commission, we have four items on the agenda, two of them ten of these states, and they go heights. Neither of them were totally completed by time, so we delayed those. We sent a special meeting for the 16th, will be due this Thursday, and consider those two once they have everything all in order. The request at 329 Vulcan Road was denied, there was no second promotion to approve. The main reason was they were asking for four different variances, one of which was no sidewalk combo, and we weren't willing to do that. Another one, they were asking for a variance on the lot size, and they were asking, and this one, they've gone up from 20 to 24 houses, and there was approximately, I don't know, it's over 50% of them, they wanted to be smaller than 75 hundred square feet. And at this juncture, I mean, a variance with the lay of the land required one or two, maybe, but for that extent, we said no. Okay. And then the last one was the Socrates Estates, that's the, I think, four house developer that 229 named L. And that was approved. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. So, code reports number six, coming down unfinished business, Resolution 26, statute 2025, resolution of privacy, where the city of Haskell Department of the Escape South Creek, not connected to the solution of the company, building doing software on their services. So this is a soft, same software that we've been using for the last 25 years. And thanks for keeping in there what you asked about. On the, if we decide not to go with them, six months into the one-year contract, we still pay for the whole year. Just like it is right now, if we decide to break the contract with them right now, we still have to pay for November and December. All they're doing is taking it from being on the surface and putting it in the cloud, pretty much all of it.
What about the travel time, what they say about it?
Travel time, travel time is about five hours. That's to get them down here and get them back. So they won't charge us anything off of that total travel time. So that's why I take that, I'm pretty sure. I've slept since I've read this. So it requires more than five hours, which is 50% of paying rate.
What's the rate? So we're doing a five-year contract that we can cancel in 90 days at a certain time, but other than that, there's no way out of this, pay the full contract.
What's the term of the contract?
Eight. How long has this, how long has the city been done with this?
Since 2000. Same software we use right now, off the water end, not breaking to the cloud, keeping them in the cloud.
It helps to me, too.
Do it.
It helps.
I'm happy to go over five hours traveling for coming from Chicago.
Well. It looks like the monthly period for the whole five years, or six part years?
This should be for the whole, the whole term contract.
So, so dollars a year for next month. In fact, we paid the initial level of my product.
Right.
Mike Ricketts?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Alis Robb?
Yes.
Haley Breckman?
James Wells?
Yes.
Brad Rogers?
No.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
New business number three, Resolution 30-2025, the resolution about the interarian social intelligence policy for the city of Haskell in compliance of Act 848 of 2025 for other purposes.
And this is how the legislature passed this just recently. Every city has to comply to that 848. This resolution and the policy comes straight from AML, which they requested that every city adopt either this one or something very similar. I know surrounding cities have adopted this exact same one. Pretty much it's saying that there has to be some kind of human oversight in responding to anything. It's not saying the city cannot use ChatGPT or the one that comes from Microsoft Windows. There just has to be human oversight. You can't tell it to respond to someone and then never look at the response. So you can still use it, just cannot rely 100% on it because it is still in digital form. Every city employee is going to have to sign it. So you can still use it, just can't 100% use it. So I would just ask that you all adopt that policy. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to his office.
Sure.
All right. All right. New business number four, ordinance eight, 2025, north ordinance amendment appendix two of the city of Haskell, Haskell Control of Development and Subdivision, land regulations clearing the money for other purposes. So on this ordinance right here, this is actually in the back. It's right back of the subdivision regulations where they have the application and the things. And what we've done is like Bryant, I think that Bryant does it like per square foot, am I correct? And they charge 18 cents?
18, yes.
And then they, all cities got it. And what this will do, instead of the city putting a bill for the engineering that we have to have look over the plans, like Vernon's, and when he comes to one of our names, it's $140 for the first hour. When he looks over the plans, I think the most we've charged, he's charged for a plan is like $1,800, somewhere in there. That comes out of the city budget, and all we're doing is passing that cost on to the sub, uh, the developers. We're taking a city of Haskell, instead of us being a metal man, they're going to pay that directly to them. Or to the city.
Actually, would that need to come to the city? And then we pay him for that? Or would that be, if a developer went in with Vernon, would that not be a contract between them?
It, it would. The city can tell the developer to pay directly to Vernon through this. So we can do kind of a subcontract with Vernon for this, where they can pay them directly.
Okay. And do we have to have any maximum costs figured in on this to give them enough to go or?
You don't have to.
Okay. It's not saying the city cannot use chat GPT or the one that comes from Microsoft Windows. There just has to be human oversight. You can't tell it to respond to someone and then never look at the response. So can still use it, just cannot rely a hundred percent on it because it is still a digital form. Every city employee is going to have to sign it. So you can still use it, just can't a hundred percent use it. So I would just ask that you all adopt that policy. Thank you.
Make a motion to his office.
Sure.
Long timer? All right. New business number four, ordinance eight, twenty-five, north ordinance amendment two of the city has to have control of development and subdivisions. With land regulations declaring emergency for other purposes. So on this ordinance right here, this is actually in the back. It's right back of the subdivision regulations where they had the application and the things. And what we've done is like Bryant, I think that Bryant does it like per square foot. Am I correct? And they charge eighteen cents.
Eight cents, yes.
And then they, all cities got it. And what this will do, instead of the city putting a bill for the engineering that we have to have look over the plans, like Vernon's. And when he comes to one of our names, it's a hundred and forty dollars for the first house. When he looks over the plans, I think the most we've charged, he's charged for a plan is like eighteen hundred dollars, somewhere in there. That comes out of the city budget and all we're doing is passing that cost on to the developers. We're taking a city of Hassel, instead of us being a metal man, they're going to pay that directly to them. Or to the city.
Actually, that need to come to the city and then we pay him for that? Or would that be, if a developer went in with Vernon, would that not be a contract between them?
It would. The city can tell the developer to pay directly to Vernon through this. So we can do kind of a subcontract with Vernon for this, where they can pay them directly.
And do we have to have any maximum costs figured in on this to give them enough to build or?
You don't have to.
Okay.
For the working. Who said that? You make the motion as the first thing or heading only?
Okay, yeah, motion for the first reading.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. If you're heading only.
I'll second.
And Brooklyn? Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz? Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? No. Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to do.
Now we gotta make the motions. Did you ask James Ockie?
The motion is spinning a little away with the second, third reading.
Make the motion that the way. Second, third reading. A second got in the way, so I just, sorry.
It's a tongue twister.
Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz? Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt? Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
Yeah, Jim, you're skipping Jim, that's what I'm trying to say.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
To both of them?
Yes. Make the motion now, very fast and wordwards.
And Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Michael Cruz?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
And Jim Wells?
Yes.
We have an emergency clause.
It does have an emergency clause.
Make the motion, pass the emergency clause.
All right, Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
And Jim Wells?
Yes.
All right. New business number five, ordinance zero-nine of twenty-two five. An ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-four establishing the Hassel cares board and nothing more can come possession and clarify the role of city employees for other purposes. So this is one of the things that the auditor said was a gray area and said that the city employees shouldn't, they can be an advisor to them, but that's about it.
First place takes the offer.
It takes all the city employees off of.
It's the fire chief, I mean the.
Mayor, fire chief.
Police chief. Police chief and fire chief.
Yep.
For the new board, how long will they be on there?
It's up to the new board.
So just definitely until they just, or is that what you're planning on doing in the rules?
Hold this down because we thought we was doing something good until a state auditor got involved and said there's too much gray area in it. And since the city employees was in, where we're going to get the money, there would have to be technically a city account to do that. So she said to target back over to the civilian boards and have the city employees be only advisors to that board and that's it.
Right. And that since as a council, we're creating this Hassel cares board.
We already created it on ordinance thirteen. So we're pretty much doing away with it and turning the board over to Jerry and then we start.
So we, so the city will maintain no oversight of this board at all?
No oversight of anything except advise them who needs help in the city. Who wants to be in charge of the money.
So it's basically telling them to go form a nonprofit?
Yep.
And there'll just be four members?
Yeah, they can have more members too if they want, it'll be under their control. It won't be under the city's control. But we gotta do this because if we don't, next year when we get audited, that's going to be.
My name is on the plan to make it, I don't consider him a board.
We not paid.
So this basically taking, this is taking everything the city has to do with this out, making this.
And just being advisors to them.
So this Hassel cares board will now become a nonprofit. Is that what? I guess I'm getting confused about where the lines are and where you're making ordinance to create something, but then we're saying we're not going to have any oversight on it. Can you understand what the auditor said?
Right. They will still have to do their bylaws. Essentially, yes, but it keeps them from having to make a five oh one three C. By having it established by the city ordinance. So the city won't really have control of the money, but there's still a city board. If that makes sense. It saves them from.
That's what I'm scared of. I mean, that's what I'm scared of because now we're giving everything up. And I know there's not a lot of money in this fund, but we're giving it all over to them, not saying that they're not trustworthy people.
Right, right.
We're now putting, giving all this stuff to the city that we're not going to see anymore. And then if something happens with that, who's responsible because it's still, it sounds like it's still a city board, although let them get that by the nonprofit.
The, right, the city would have no liability on this. It would be the board members, so they're taking that responsibility of being part of the board members.
These, I guess, still feels weird.
I understand. I think the other option the council would have is to do away with the board altogether and have them go be a five oh one C three.
But we can't give them money that's in that account. Because there's already money in that account right now. So if we don't do this, that's just money set in an account, doing nothing.
Yes.
Because we can't touch it to give it in.
Well, I know, I, that, but well, what we had the ordinance say that on the creation of the five oh one three C, the funds in this account can transfer to them. This is what I was thinking would be smoother on it. That when I read, that's why, why don't, why don't we just, why don't they just form a five oh one three C and we say in ordinance, once it's formed, this Hassel cares board is formed, we transfer the money to them and then they go take care of that. Just feels like for me, we get city out of it, we're not responsible.
You couldn't absolutely do that.
This just feels maybe that we still have, it's a city board that we created, so we can come back and change the lines later. Or we could, somebody could have them with that thing that we're, well, why would we give it to them, whereas they form the public?
Yes, that is, that is your decision. Legislative audit, just if the board was going to stay, they wanted it to have all city employees.
No, I agree, we don't need to be given out grants as a city, that's why I was, I just want to talk about it. Asking them to form a five oh one three C and then we'll give the money in there.
Can you amend this one to say?
Okay, so tell me exactly what you're wanting to dissolve the.
Upon the creation of the Hassel cares five oh one three C nonprofit, any remaining funds in this blah blah account, need to lay out right now, tell me what you said. Cash account to go in will be transferred to the newly formed Hassel cares.
So upon the five oh one C three established, this board will be dissolved and all funds will, okay, I can do that. And then.
This is my thought, but I, I mean, I don't know.
Yes, Karen?
I can understand what you're saying, but will the board, the city board still have access on these funds until the five oh one C three is formed? Because that's going to take much to get that done.
If, if this is amended today, then.
Because we got Thanksgiving, Christmas and some other things coming up that this money's meant for. And if the city board can't touch it and we can't touch it.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be sitting there to the five oh one three established, but we'd be meeting the intent of what the leg auditor, the auditor's wanted us to do by no longer having the city able to, the city employees in charge of that.
Right, but would the city employees have it, have access to it until this five oh one C three is?
Not if we put it in here that we're going to this motion to form a five oh one three C. Because I want the, those funds are there until the five oh one three C is established and then transferred to them.
So those funds will be frozen until such a time as?
Right. This is what I was thinking, that way it takes them out of it, they can't touch it because we froze it as a council. And then when the five oh one three C is established, it'll go to them.
You work for state, can you get that done a little faster?
No, because I work for the state. They're shut down.
They're shut down.
There's the IRS, so, the IRS, it's online though, it's not, you just, well, you have registered with state too, I can't help that, yeah. You registered from the secretary of state's office. I can help that.
I think what he's trying to say is we're going to miss out two major holidays that people need the money to make a better use of this year.
Take about six or seven.
I think last year, there was something like twenty, twenty-five families that at Thanksgiving and what, six or eight families for Christmas?
So can we create and just go ahead and give them to them with intent of them forming a five oh one three C at which time the city will have no involvement in it?
What you can do is go ahead and adopt this. And we put, so that they can have access to the funds and no city employee is associated with it. And then we put something in here that they have to go file for five oh one C three status by this date. And then we can do a, then we can dissolve the board once they get their five oh one three C, C three, is it three C, C three? I get myself confused.
So we could amend it to say to go ahead and do it, but they.
Go ahead and do it.
Of establishing a five oh one three C.
Yes.
And when that five oh one three C.
Then we dissolve the board.
Then Hassel, city oversight ends. If I can say that again.
I got it. Yes. So adopt it with the amendment to add that they will seek five oh one C three status. And once that is formed and you can even put, it has to be formed by this date. Then the board will dissolve and have no city oversight.
Say about June thirtieth.
Okay.
That way it gives us this full year to get that when the auditor, so we're looking, that way the auditor knows we were trying to get rid of it.
Yes.
So who will have control of the funds right now?
Y'all will, but y'all need to be working towards being, getting that five oh one.
So we can go tomorrow and change the signatures at the bank?
Yes. Well, I assume you can go tomorrow, once everything's executed.
The citizens talk.
Yes, yes.
So I need a motion for the first reading as amended.
I'll second. And actually, read it.
Can you read it next one?
Well, it don't beat the, it don't.
Yeah, yeah, do the heading only and I will have the amendment done, I can have the amendment done tomorrow and get it to Taylor for it to be executed.
So go ahead and read this?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen twenty-two establishing the Hassel cares board to update board composition and clarity, clarify the role of city employees and. Brad?
Yes.
Mike Cruz?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers? Michael Baker?
Yes.
Jim Wells?
There.
Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz? Adam Ricketts? Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
Jim Wells?
You want to talk to emergency clause?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
You want to do emergency clause?
That's what you did.
No, that was for the passage.
Oh, wow, you want to do the emergency clause?
No.
All right, I'll second.
Brad Cotton?
Yes.
Mike Cruz?
Yes.
Adam Ricketts?
Yes.
Dallas Rutt?
Yes.
Kayla Breckland? Greg Rogers?
Yes.
Michael Baker?
Yes.
All right, go back to another one. We forgot to read that heading on that.
Ordinance number oh eight twenty-five, an ordinance amending appendix two of the city of Hassel controlled development subdivision of land regulations declaring an emergency and further.
Oh, that was in ordinance?
Yep.
That we passed? Probably did that one.
No, I read it off my sheet, I'm chief.
Make the motion, read the heading, first heading only.
Sure.
We'll get it straight. So under comments. Well, a couple are in the book, you should have Hassel meeting meeting. With John Keenan, the taxpayers who got the bill for the Remus ditch down at Clark. It was on that last Friday. None of that, not on that, you got any public comments?
Just a reminder, Halloween night, we're going to be at the museum. So if you got kids and stuff, come on down or if you want to sit up with us and pass out candy, last year we had over.
Over two hundred people.
So come on down.
So just the PD and the fire department going down there looking again. I think New Life was enjoying any festivities down there all the time. New Life was selling and bringing everything.
I don't think so.
I think they, we talked to, or we talked to one of the members, they said they don't do anything on Halloween night, they do it like the night before. We tried to get some.
I know they asked whom to contact about it, so.
We'll double check with them and make sure that just what the member says.
I'll work then.
We should have turned it.
Turn it. Uh. You got that picture right there. No. Do you got all those notes down?
Yeah. I know.